Happy New Year to everybody, welcome to the committee. Apologies for the delay to start. There are a lot of papers to distribute and stuff. Just thought I'd take a breath back, let's go round the table and introduce myself. I'm Patrick Carroll, Chair of the Committee.
Tony Wolf, Mrs.
And possibly Employment Skills and Myth.
This goes to the Department of Education. From Moreland, councillor, the Utrival.
And cabinet member for education and employment skills.
Darren Harvey, who's the director for Hammond.
Elaine Corstens, the 평민수리 City Council.
Mary Turner, councillor, the town hall.
Hi, I'm Mary Turner, the town hall.
Kimberly Barry, our councillor, the town hall's councilor.
Lee Robinson, my councillor, captain's in fact.
I'm Celia Loughran, councillor for the cross hall.
I'm Shaun Shaw, councillor for Old Swan, committee member.
Apologies, I've been received today from councillor Alan Tong, councillor Sarah Lawton, councillor Ian Byrne, committee member, I can't remember Paul, Chair Paul, I can't remember Zelena, who was from Molling as well. Can I ask, does anybody have any interest to declare related to anything to be discussed after the agenda? Minutes ago, we were referring to minutes ago last meeting at page 117 of the agenda information. So is that what you're saying, that we approve those minutes for that to receive, does that agree? My supervisor from the last meeting had been submitted prior to the meeting and had been tabled with the updates. Now, I'm not sure if the tabled updates give the response that was requested. So with regard to the difference which has been tabled, minutes ago, for the last meeting, minute thirty-three. That's a detailed response to a question that councillor Shawson raised. In writing, along the second page in relation to minute thirty-seven, the updates, there's also a detailed response there. The further minute that was arising that you submitted councillor Shawson, is it addressed to you or did it come last time through the rest of the night?
The point I appreciate, if you ask, many actual parties around the school last time, gradually it's gone, they go, it's a decision of the developer. A primary council, the Dallas Council, they couldn't make their financial staffels and therefore they chose to look elsewhere and set some investments. A person going close to the talent to make up, it happened unfortunately sometimes if we don't know whatever laws the financials call them, they might want. And they might have to get it on the staffel financially, it just happens sometimes, there's nothing more to it than that, the understanding.
Are there any other papers arising from some minutes ago last meeting that you'd like to raise now?
Yeah, I've just looked at everybody now, on page two, issues raised include changing horizons of primary schools event. Still go it the wrong way around, it is actually a town hall of previously stated, not the same church as current, sorry.
At the number three level, moving further along to our cabinet member of faith, can I refer members to pages eight to twelve of the agenda? And can I also invite first somebody to introduce the basic data of what's happening first of all.
I'm not going to opt in on this, but I think there are some pieces of good news here. And the first piece is this new piece of investment to the city region. And the point I'm making here is I think it's really important for this committee to be aware how the money is spread across the city region and how much of people is getting in relationship to others, just so that we're keeping an eye on how the money is being allocated. I attended the first city region employment and skills portfolio, hold this meeting at the end of November. I have to say it was a really good meeting, it was well attended and we were advised at that meeting of the six priorities that no one will have for the city region. I think these would probably be on my list of six as well. I think it's a very good list, I think it's something we can all work together on, especially things like collective work on sports. As you're probably aware, the city region doesn't have responsibility for education, but I think everybody understands across the city region, education is fundamental to outcomes and work opportunities ultimately. So more work in there is very, very good and welcome. Over the page, had a great afternoon here just before Christmas with the owner and some of our young people who have been on, very happy, I don't know if everyone just used the acronym, the SF ILEs course for the seven young people. Eight young people attended with their families and it was really fascinating to listen to their experiences, the challenges they had to overcome and also equally fascinated to hear them question the role of their natural role. And here we got the, it was a lovely, lovely event and the great news is the eight of them have employed. There's a side of venture, so it was just an update. This is a course that's been developed as an alternative and I've arranged for the volunteers to now attend LASH at the start of February to advise their teachers of the existence of the course and the type of things they'll be doing on there. Was really pleased to attend our road adult learning centre, it's the first one I've been to. To be quite frank, I'm surprised at how well used it is, there are lots and lots of courses going on and they're all really, have to say the least, and talking to the learners, it was interesting. They were all committed to actually doing more, getting qualifications, trying to go on to get a better job. And it was really very, very heartwarming to hear their stories. I also attended an adult learning services goodness meeting, just I think at the end of October, just after the last select and the next one will be in January and that's my opportunity to actually track and keep an eye on outcomes both generally of learning services. Adult learning services are doing very, very well, they're doing a great job. Liverpool Ways to Work, there's a little good news story and I think we've had extended funding on this, Elaine, which is fantastic and it will now run until June twenty twenty-one. The Schools of North Conversation was held here in the town hall and focused on apprenticeships. And the reason I mention it there again is because I've been talking, if you look at the paragraph below, if I had a C Foundation about setting up a course. I'm really concerned about the lack of spend of the apprenticeship levy and we've been looking at what we could possibly do. And this is quite a small project, but Liverpool Foundation are going to work with us on it. I've managed to get, I think it's a hundred K funding from the Council of Education to provide some wages for young trainees to train as youth workers because there is actually gap in the city. Given the concept of generally decimating our youth services and we found the only youth workers now operating in the city as part of the council. We see that as a skills gap and the intention here is to train on two teams, one from the north and one from the south of the city, but to be very high quality and to give them a much broader set of training, if you like, than you would normally have for youth workers. So we would expect them to be able to deliver careers advice, mental health, physical health support, signposting services, that sort of thing, as well as the usual work of youth workers. So that one, this early days, we've had a couple of meetings, so the funding is in place and the programme will be developed. I'll report back on that again once it starts to take shape. I also attended the Enterprise Hope Launch, which is the second phase over at the Women's Organisation. It is what it says, it's very successful, another good news story. And what's happening with phase two is that they understand that, you know, you set up a business, you have some success, but you can't just pull the cart away from under new businesses that quickly. It's just a little bit more of that support to ensure that they are really properly embedded and they will be successful. I had a meeting with councillor Tuman about business growth hub and I'm just getting the head around the function of that. And I will be meeting with her and Janice Meers next week to discuss that more and I will report back further on that next time. Happy thought, Central Library was absolutely fabulous, I don't know how many of you are aware of Mary Ann Jenkin, but she spoke at the Rise Dinner in St George's Hall in April and she is an extraordinary woman. And she has personal aim to ensure a million new women, or women, we don't have to be on, women led code by twenty thirty. And it's very interesting when you look at the unexpected nature of skills that are required now. And I don't think Robert Bond ever mentioned this, he mentioned people working in cast work and that union leave at uni who also need to be able to code chemists because they need to be able to tweak their own programmes, if you like. Coding is crucial going forward and unfortunately it's not that popular in schools. So we need to find fresh ways of getting new people to engage with this, this is the most essential skill going forward. And Mary Ann was due to come back to the city, I think possibly this month, but quite early in the year to do more work with us and I welcome that. Chatham House was workshop at the FAT and a couple of people from the Mayor's Office attended and said it was really good. The year of reading is very important, it's something the mayor is absolutely fixed on. And I would like to be able to measure something that comes out of this. So we are working around a proper timeline, if you like, of events which will actually turn into a directory in future years that people can use. We're going to have a website set up beneath Central Library on the council site, which will have all those resources there, all that information. Because the thing that seems to me is so much work is going on, what's going on inside of it and people are not all aware of everything. I certainly am not aware of everything and when I talk to people, they would welcome having that information so they know what's there. From our point of view, I should know there's no money. So everything we have to do, we have to do with no budget. And so we're doing things like, we want to use social media to highlight and really raise the profile of good work that's taking place in the city. And I've just drawn your attention to that hashtag, Liverpool reads, if we can use that as much as possible when we're tweeting and doing things. And also watch out for other things. All members are invited to the launch, which it will be, I think, Tuesday first, January in Central Library. Changing Horizons, a venue just entered, is actually in the town hall. Business and Governance in Schools, I'm literally meeting with some businesses and schools, I think, start of February. Because we're also trying to cement those relationships, Dri Shute's done some excellent work for us in making these connections. And she's also trying to layer that with the work around reading. So lots of additionality coming through. I've listed here meetings, not everything I've attended, but I'll just try to give you a flavour of some of the stuff I do on the education side as well, which might be of interest. Happy to take questions, Chair.
Thanks very much councillor, and I've got indications from, it's a technical, in over there, councillor Tram, that's first. Two, a small, sorry. I think it's, all the sixteen million have been allocated, it's the seventy, you call, I can't remember where it is, I'll take it. The figures there, the days spent, which you saw there, eight million, as you know, eight million, as I can sort of read, it's also, yeah. The year of the fair allocation will come based on. Three million service line called, assuming it's a sample, and the rest of the figures there, seven point seven. Is the rest of that going to have a fair transfer, is it all, is it all being allocated?
Thank you, I actually think it's general facility improvements, the rest. It says, just like it with, they're also spending money on local common technology and improvements to facilities and stuff.
Sorry, the other question was in item three, I'm saying page towards the bottom. Are there specific gaps in the area in the reading economy of thirty thousand vacancies in the NHS and the leisure? Is that the mayor's side of the region or the North West region?
Yeah, it's the Liverpool City region.
Eighteen thousand, right.
It's massive.
Councillor Roberts. Thanks very much, just an answer on page twelve, I wanted to say something about. We touched upon slightly last week about businesses and governance in schools and, yeah, the Lord also exercises trying to get a variety of people from the local business community involved in sort of our school governance, that's what I'm about. And that's to want to obviously a diverse approach to sort of school governance. But I just wanted to sort of explore a bit, how are we making sure it was a local authority that that's going to be simply across all schools? And is there a fair approach where it might end up with, because of a variety of special links, like you put in those terms, that can be a type of more, sort of happen to be more across the city, are we making sure it's spread out across all schools?
I don't know if we've actually got a plan for minutes, I think where governance works, vacancies arise and it would be a case of allocation going to space and vacancy. I would say generally, all schools would probably benefit from this kind of association with business. And what we'd be more particularly looking at would be the skills, because all schools are required to do the skills gap. I've said a question very closely, often abroad about this, and so it's about matching that rather than, you know, maybe placed geographically. And it would be that kind of approach.
Tracey, you interested in the example?
I'm going to take you now because it might just follow on from what I've already discussed, so.
So it wasn't. Am I okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a couple of questions on the, on pages, you mentioned, about making this recent, you talked about strategic briefly notes. Just wondering, are they available for circulation or are they only for?
I don't think it's available yet, but it will be, and it will be important to make one suggest and we'll share.
Thank you, I'm just wondering one other question, only, it was my question really, just a point on the LFC Foundation programme, welcome, I think this way. One of the, I know we had a presentation a couple of reasons ago around the councilships and you mentioned of the work taken. And one of the things that I've been told by a lot of youth workers and managers is that the existing youth workers actually need a lot more training and I was just wondering if this is a pilot, if it could be seen as a pilot, but how do we enable existing youth workers to get that training because it's certainly been identified as a need?
That's something we can do anyway. The point with the apprenticeship levy, which is either such a massive spend right across the board, not just the council, is it doesn't pay wages. This is different in that we've found some funding to pay some wages so we can then pull down the levy for the training. For anybody else, if they're already employed, just talk to us and we'll help you get that down because we have that expectancy, isn't the council? Yeah, and I think, like you, I think, why not have more training? What we don't want is the money being siphoned off to managers who are going to do degrees, like us members, really for helping younger people.
Thanks for the wonderful, well done. There's a couple of matters I want to talk about, abundant is the ways to work in employment support programme. There's only a little bit mentioned about that, but it's got sixty million quid in it, this is a lot of money. We've just had a deal in variation, all of that, because I read the cabinet papers, I think that was the twenty-two December. So there's a lot of money coming around there, I'd like to have a lot more in depth, brought to this committee for that. Because I think I mentioned it in one of my emails I sent, I think we need to help so we can scrutinise a lot of ourselves as well. Don't forget how many you have, maybe you've discussed it before, I don't know, but we've discussed how many that we've got before. But it's something I think is a highlight. And then, because it's well worth it, that's a lot of money, sixty million quid. Then there's a few other matters, the business growth hub, I did ask a question about that in the email and I did speak with, I'm referring to that this morning. But I don't think about accurate stats because in Old Swan, there's a lot of people, where I go, in Old Swan, there's lots of businesses, that's a lot of businesses closed down or opened up. I hate seeing many shops, especially when they turn into fast food joints, I think there's fast food joints, but you get beckon shops, off licence fast food and charity shops. There's got to be a bit more merchant community in that because shops there, that's all the companies, you can't see it going down here. You want to try and, you know, stimulate to maintain business rates. I'll give you an example, our one of the addresses in this form, he pays a lot of money in business rates. So, you know, we're a duty to try and stimulate business that way. There's other ways, and I appreciate the ways to work, it's got sixty million pounds, but, but there are other things in the local economy because we live in a capitalist society, so, you know, businesses coming down, but businesses all their life, probably can't be small businesses. We keep this, if I'm not wrong, to my opinion, I'd be a small business itself, so I'm very interested, very keen, especially in, you know, Old Swan, where we have lots of businesses. I have one business who won't pay and come in home with tears because of goodness alive. So I think it's a goal with the business growth hub and another type of help. To have that help is really, really important, just broken, and I know that we have a chamber in Combeys, but there's also the Federation of Small Businesses, but I can see them supporting here, I was a member of that zone, very keen to have all different mix, so to be the people in the types of team. I'd say I'm very enthusiastic, I know, I appreciate that I'm a member, but there's not these problems with you guys in the time, well done for the reports. I've got a few other issues, I've created some through one in the email, so you can answer them in the email, but that's all, thanks.
Right, other ways to work, it will be called directly to the select and we will be able to do that. I'm just making a comment on the fact that we got the additional money because I think it was worth it. In terms of the business growth hub, my understanding, though it's not perfect, is that it actually works with new businesses? Which is quite separate, I don't know, from businesses closing down?
It can work with startups and every stage of business depending what the business needs are, so it's quite flexible. And you can also get, if you're established business, you can also get some, there are grants and funding and support. So it can have its stage of business really.
So basically, in answer to that, it's as I said earlier, I am actually meeting with the next person now, start of February and down more.
I'm just making comments as well, we have had representation around this committee table, from the Federation of Small Businesses. That representation is removed because there were a representative, we didn't have to tell them, I didn't want to have the invitation to call. If it became apparent, the invitations to attend the meetings, there's been a typical record basis, not more than that, to be exact, that the committee's approved. Or if they're on terms or standards, there's an indication from the FSB that they would welcome that invitation, it was a purpose, that's what we're trying to be at least. Okay, councillor Tuman, please indicate the next question.
So, just on page ten on the Enterprise Hub, I'll refer to the update on that, I've had experience of working at the Women's Organisation. Miami, just one of the issues I've got is, if you're not aware of that, how you would find out about that support? Because that support's available to all businesses, startups across the city region and that links into the growth hub. So if a business rings up, they're a startup, they can get this free support. So I just wonder if it's worth maybe just getting the link to this business support, Enterprise Hub, and sending it out to the groups that are aware of it?
I would have thought that's already happening because even before I was on the select, I was aware of it and I've actually attended some of their courses myself. I don't know, I would have thought it would be marketed for the city region anywhere as well.
It's not, it's not an detailed, detailed reality with, I'm sure you can put together a note for committee members to explain how the communication is worked and the marketing is worked through.
Yeah, I mean, and there are, I, sorry, I used to be a growth hub advisor myself, so I know that are leaflets. But there's no marketing campaign or, I don't think there has been, has there, to actually target that? So we could just get that note and send it out, yeah.
Actually, I think this is actually promoted on Liverpool City website as well, is it Liverpool Express? You know, so I think there has been publicity around it. I'm just, I'm not sure of detail of the publicity around it.
So, councillor. And just on opportunities to build people, there's just a notice on the channel about working brands, it sounds really interesting. Would you just give a little bit more information of what schools they're working with? Are they, what are the opportunities they provide, are they providing any kind of vocational routes for the young people, students? They're linked to maritime, maritime economy and are there any cost implications as well for the students, parents of the schools? And then just in addition to that, the LFC Foundation, I mean, that sounds fantastic, it all has delivered and it's a high quality scheme. And I realise it may be too early to say that, or how many great places do you promote to bonds? And is there any expected time to recruit it, is it all going smoothly?
Well, you're right, I think we're talking about a cohort of twelve, maybe fourteen. We are limited by the amount of money we've got that we can actually pay as wages because we have to pay a proper living wage. And it's once they have the wages, so they will be doing outreach as well, working alongside trained youth workers and learning that way. But then that goes in the specific training, which we should get with the levy. So we're thinking six or seven in each team, okay, and we're hoping it will be four, three years. At the minute, I've only identified funding for the first two years, but as part of the training, how much are you putting in here? They will be trained to actually write funding, to start drawing down their own monies. And we've had a very good offer from the LFC Foundation, they do fundraisers and they've offered us one as well, which could draw in additional money. So part of this will be pulling your own funding for the third year, which I think is good for them to learn. is good for them to learn. I know in my board, we have a consortium called Priority Youth, and for the last four years, they've been doing exactly that, they've brought in their own funding. Going back to the Mesa Town, Mesa Side, Benjersale, which draws fast, it's ocean lift sea, apparently there are as many as eighty odd land-based jobs around Maritime, which, how is the word, but there's so much opportunity for careers. This, would be delivered in two ways, I imagine, and I've spoken, we've met with youth services as well about this, is either via the schools, or by referrals from youth services, so maybe they come across young people who need some support and need a different type of curriculum. We also have, actually, you probably know, with some reporting on it before, some called League Up in Partners, which is an alternative curriculum. It is vocational, it will be delivered, some parts online, some on a boat, lobbed, what was it called, anglic, anglician, and some out at sea. It is meant to be an alternative curriculum, or it would run alongside, I think we'd also want to be doing English maths and those basics as well. The, the funding, and this is why I've arranged them to meet, slash, is the Association of Local Head Teachers, so they're top directed schools, the schools will know their peoples who need this kind of curriculum, and have asked them to work out a unit cost. So we would want to know initially and immediately, how much for any young person to do this course, and then the schools can work that out. We're also in the background looking at possibly getting businesses to sponsor places as well, so when referrals, they come through youth services, we can actually pay for those as well. So there's a lot going on behind all that, does that answer all your questions?
Just a little small one, do you know if they have anything for the LFC Foundation to compare with, would you be able to use the samples? I understand, I get it.
I'm going to say no, because I think working out such a programme will take a few months, ideally, I'd like to see it around the summer, the money's in place, so, you know?
Thank you. I just want to start off by saying thank you, Barbara, because you certainly started this decade with the energy and the busy agenda that we expect to have, so, so thanks for that. And I was going to raise a little bit of the work as well, and I welcome what Counselor Shaw said around, what to see the world, because the report I actually wrote, the work, only shined positive lights on it, you know, we exceed all targets, it's helped as, you know, as many people as we can, and that's a brilliant thing, and the fact that growing social funds are continuing the work, and that we can continue to help people in the city region, so, so that's good news. I just want to ask a quick question on the year of reading, see if there's a buyer at all, because, you know, as a councillor, I think it'd be a great investment for, for young people, of course, for sure, councillors would think the same, so is there any buyer that we can, you know, throughout the local pots, come, come forward and buy it to the service at all?
Yes. There'll be lots of opportunities for that kind of arrangement. We're also working with businesses, and we've currently got some sponsorship, so for example, the lead governor, Alderhey, councillor governor's, put up the funding for the first competition, if you like, surprises for that. Bill Mott Dixon had just sponsored the launch of the event. What we're trying not to do is ask for money in the first instance, but my own view is things like the Dolly Parton Foundation work, that councillor over there, used to do Rachel Loven, we had a sit my ward, but when she stood down, we stopped doing that. Things like that, I think we can regenerate again, again. The other things, though, I would draw attention to, is there's some really good stuff which costs absolutely nothing. So for example, the big little library up in Gascq is run by a member staff from Gascq Comp, in the L T L shop increasing there, and they literally give away books, but they are dependent on people making contributions, et cetera. So more about this, I think the main drive will be for us to get that information into one place where people can access it, and, you know, we will always work with councillors to spend their money wisely on educational stuff, and I will mention something completely different here, I did send an email last week about the Dolly Art Champions in schools for £250, you can put your school, if you're a governor or just a councillor, and they're in your launch, you can put them into this competition for £500, you can have an artist who went to that school alongside, there's many ways to read, you can read art as well as words, so, there you go, there's £500, but we'll have reached, though, please.
Just a brief, we're still use, we're still the Dolly Parton scheme, which is pretty successful. Just on something else, that Counselor Shaw all mentioned, I would be interested in getting more people from the business community on our advisory panel, I know we've, we've mentioned this, Barbara, I think you mentioned somebody from the charity sector that you had in mind to make me to be part of the panel?
Can you just repeat that again, and re-rem上?
Somebody from the charity sector that could be on the advisory panel?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, I don't know if we'd organize that, it wouldn't be me, but I think it's the reason I do it.
It is a great idea, and there's a standing request, if any committee members have any suggestions as to who should be advisory members of this committee, please let me know, outside of the confines of this meeting, by email, and if it's appropriate, and if they accept, and if they turn up, then they can be advisory members of this committee. Over the last year, we've had a number of suggestions, and these two of them have been accepted as advisory members of this committee. Sadly, one of them has never accepted an invitation to attend, but that's no reflection of the people who made those suggestions in the first place, so. But if you've got any ideas for who those people should be, let me know, and I'll extend invitations if it's appropriate. On the panel, I'd like to thank Councilbody for your updates, and your further speaking to the role. It's particularly important, I think, at this time, the UN sample, we're looking to get back before an air reaction, open the city, the city region, open next forms, that there's a strong commitment to appointing the skills in the city. If I'll, I'll be glad, I'll cover this, thank you very much. Can I move the Councilbody's report, it is accepted? Can we move it? Please, okay. On the item number four, I've had that, in the light of the last, the successes of the last meeting, we've had presentations from two recipients of the I N L program who came and spoke directly to the committee, because I think it's important that we don't just get quantitative data in front of us, we also get to carry the quantitative and personalised stories from home, the work that we do, and the work that the City Council does impacts on people's lives. In light of that, I've asked the participants, from all the programmes across the city, be invited to attend, so give a personal story about the difference it made to their lives. Unfortunately, they are at the mercy of us, we were able to attend, and I'm informed that nobody from the programme is able to attend today's meeting, so I propose that agenda writing is deferred to a future meeting. Hopefully, at the end of February, if we can align the stars and people's families, and make sure that there's work being done, and we can actually scrutinise there. In the absence of those people coming to present to us, what I'm going to ask is, and then if you could just speak, maybe up there, we have, I'll make some of the work, we have to do, I think we might see first line of the agenda, most new people, the services are likely to attend as well, too.
And, Hugh, true, yes, it's really, it's unfortunate that we haven't let some of our participants to committee. I hope that you found the last meeting very interesting, I'm sure you did, to just learn the different perspectives from the, the young people that came to speak. We do have lots and lots of different participants with very, very different backgrounds, and we'd be more than happy, Chair, to invite again towards the end of February, next meeting, if possible, for agenda writing, a couple of different perspectives to come to meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to provide a little bit of further updates, and I welcome the feedback from our local committee members to receive any other questions that we forward about ways to work. I'd be very, very happy to provide a more detailed report about the work that we do, the ESF, European programmes, very, very heavily scrutinised by our European officers, and we have a lot of audits, and we'd be very happy to, to provide further information. One of the things we've always said as well to local board councillors at previous committees, and to particularly new committee members, is that we would welcome you into our centres to show you around, to meet some of our participants, to talk to staff, and to find out a little bit more about the work that we're doing. The staff absolutely welcome that, they feel really a privilege to have our board councillors come and talk, and talk to staff and show an interest, and it's also part of our governance arrangements, because from a scrutiny perspective, we, we are accountable, so we absolutely would be more than happy to, to invite some of the board councillors to talk to participants and members at any point at all, and equally, I would be happy to come out to wards to talk to you about the work that we're doing in your boards, and if there's anything else we can do with, you know, participants. I was just thinking about the year of reading, all monthly, if you like, for ways to work and funding skills, the in-house team is a full thing, so connecting that into discussing and making it, you know, happen at board level, we'd be really happy to do some learning opportunities, reading opportunities, tasters in local schools within some of your boards, we have teaching staff that do lots of reading with, you know, with families, with parents, so again, they offer us there all the time to do that, so, you know, it's a good opportunity to share that with you, and as I say, previous committee meetings, we've done that, we've always got a little bit of that.
So do any members have any questions?
So, thanks Elaine, that's really helpful, and I'd love to take you up on the offer, but unfortunately, you know, I've got a job as well, I'm just wondering, is it possible for you to get some, maybe even video clips of the activities that you do? And, you know, I, I found it really interesting when you brought some people along last time, but I appreciate not every person can do that, so, when I worked at N S E Housing Trust, what we used to do is do video clips, and that gave kind of the trustees a taste of the work we did.
Yeah, absolutely, you do have video clips.